All right. Thank you to everyone for being here. And our main, two things that we're going to do today is our regular agenda review, and that would be after we do our school board self-evaluation. I have handed everyone a form. If you would take a moment to look at that while I explain. Basically, it's just kind of a guide to help us get through this. And you'll see the first column is actions that you have completed that have, have or will take us forward as a team in the past six months. And the second one is actions that you've taken that have slowed us or stopped work as it needs. And the third column is, as a result of the discussion, I will take the following actions. So it's somewhat of an action plan. And I would like everyone to take the next five minutes and to fill in items on this. And what we're going to do is have it on the side as we're going through the process to kind of remind us what we did, what we could do, and yes, ma'am.
My issue with this board is it's the great "I" am. There's "I," not "we," "I" and "me," not "us." I think this perpetuates the problem that we have. I don't care for the form because I think the actions we take are board actions and not individual actions. The actions that we have taken as a board have either taken us forward or taken us back. And this-
The thing is, we are made up of seven individuals.
We are, but there's too much "I" in our conversation.
Exactly. And this is why we need to know as individuals what our part is in making this a team. So it's just time for a moment to reflect about things that you think that have taken us forward or could take us forward. And is there anyone else that disagrees on you that does not want to do the form?
I'm going to make you that we take this team forward.
Is there anyone else that does not want to do it? Can I take a quick question? And Ms. Fisher, what we were just saying with this form, and this is not just me. I discussed this with our facilitators as well to kind of lead us into the discussion on our self-evaluation. And Ms. Fisher, all of this is taking a few minutes to look and put down some of the things that you personally have done that may have helped to propel us forward as a team. And the second column is things that maybe could have been done differently that may not have propelled us as well. And as we go through the process of the afternoon, then you will be able to fill in the last column as well. As a result of the discussion, what are some things that can possibly be changed? And Ms. Morgan brought up that it's a team effort, and I do agree with that. We are made up of seven individuals that have to figure out how do we help the entire team move forward? So let's just take a moment. If no one has any other objections, I'm filling in some of the things.
Yes. So we're doing this before we do your self-evaluation.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
And it's not something that you're going to have to share. Okay. Because you want to have these couple of things down. And hopefully, this will help us to be reflective as to our part of this team as we go forward with this discussion. I also would like to take a moment to introduce another midwife particular.
Chris Saunders.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So first, if I can, again, I'm Alan Gabriel. I was not at your last board meeting. I will not be in your next one. Mitch will be attending that on your behalf, in favor of the firm. When we started with you, we mentioned Chris Saunders would be another lawyer from the office that would be participating and working with us. And this is a gentleman. He wanted the opportunity to be here, and I just give him the chance to say hello. So, of course.
[laughter]
One of the things that I'm going to ask eventually is, you know, we've been working with you now since May 1st. It's only a few weeks, really. We're still getting our feet under us as to what your needs are and how to evaluate and do the work for you. But if there's any questions, I mean, some of you have reached out to us individually and communicated with us, and that's absolutely what we want you to do. So please don't hesitate to do that. But if there's anything else, or if there's a question that comes up, or there's something that we're not doing, Dr. Atkins, if you would, I would ask that you tell us because we wouldn't know that. We picked up where your previous school board attorney started or left off, and he's not here for us to discuss items anymore. So we're just, we're just working through the process. And thank you. We're happy to be here.
Thank you.
Yeah. You may open.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Chris Saunders. I'm an associate in the Fort Lauderdale office in West Rosetta. It's a real privilege to be here. I'm really excited to work with all of you. My mom was a teacher for 35 years, so this is something that's near and dear to my heart. So I look forward to looking for you. Like outside, if you've got any questions or any issues, you know, feel free to return.
Okay. Thank you so much. She'll be proud of you. Okay. Our next segment, then, we're going to the self-evaluation. And it's my understanding of process is that we will take it section by section. And I would also like to add, as we do a section, so that there is equity for everyone that as you introduce a section, that each member would have three minutes to give their comments on that particular section, if that looks okay to you. And we're recording it, just so that everyone gets an opportunity. And when there's other comments, we can circle back.
It'll take us a little. We'll go beyond the timeframe, but so we work at the board's pleasure.
Well, and it's like, if you need the three minutes, if you don't, three minutes is the limit.
Okay, that's the max.
Is that okay?
Will there be opportunity to respond to others or not?
I would think so. I mean, it's a workshop. It's a discussion, yeah. But I mean, just to give everybody an opportunity to, you know, to speak and get their opinion.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members, and Dr. Atkins and our esteemed attorneys. It's nice to be close with you. And of course, I think I had a chance to talk with you on the phone, so a pleasure to be here. Cindy and I are going to be facilitating this workshop, and it is our hope that this is a conversation. We do not want to be the ones doing all the talking. We prefer that that is you. So we will certainly operate at the pleasure of the board. When Cindy and I put together our game plan for today, what we thought we might do is just talk a little bit about our process. Mrs. Gittens has talked about our strengths and opportunities, debrief. So we thought that might be the best approach as we go through each one of the dimensions of the six dimensions. And then, most importantly, talking about what are those next steps? Because an evaluation of the board, of an entity, of an individual is always best done when we understand what the strengths are. We're going to work on keeping those strong. When we look at opportunities, and every organization has them, we certainly want to talk about what they are. But even more importantly, what's our next step or our next action on that? And so that's where Cindy and I will be working with you to keep us moving. So we're going to go ahead and jump into the agenda unless there are any questions for us. Okay. So what we'd like to do is start out with the first dimension, which is contextual. And as we said, there are six. You do have, in your backup materials, whether you printed them out or had them electronically, you do have all of the board's self-evaluations available to you, each of the members, as well as the composite, which Susan very kindly pulled together for all of us so we could take a look at all of our comments and all of our ratings at one glance. And so we'll be working off of that composite for today. So strengths, where do we start? Let's start with dimension one, under contextual. This area has to do with taking the time to learn about issues, reviewing our mission, and making sure that it's aligned with our vision, discussing research about events and trends, looking at, you know, discussions that the board has had, our communication, understanding the role of the superintendent as CEO and educational leader of the district. And you have the rest of the indicators in front of you. So we'll entertain some discussion around strengths. Let's start there. What do you see the board doing well in this area?
I'm having trouble doing my analysis.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan?
Well, I said, the board communicates its decisions to all affected by them. I, I think that our minutes are brought, are put online. The public has access to our meetings. So I think, for all intents and purposes, if the verb is, or not verb, the noun is "decisions," then we are effectively communicating our decisions.
Other strengths, Ms. Fisher?
I think that we gather information through our briefings, and we also work with our school boards association to take part in the training so that we are prepared.
Okay. Thank you. Other strengths in the area of contextual?
I read the first item as before. The board takes time to learn about important issues. We have public comment, and we have briefings, and I think all of us are open to emails and meetings with not just constituents, but also hearing from the teachers. I, myself, and I have everybody else here, we've taken school tours. And so I think we really are in touch with the community in that way, and we allow them to express their, their needs and their issues. We do a good job of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other strengths in contextual? All right. Let's move on to some opportunities. Opportunities in the first dimension here.
Well, I talked about the creation of a policy and imposing upon ourselves a fiduciary duty, which our previous attorney indicated does not currently apply via statute to the Lee County School District or the Lee County School Board. I really think we can be leaders in this area in Lee County. I'm not aware of another governing body in Lee County that has imposed a fiduciary duty upon itself, and I'd really like to see us be leaders here and just sort of put some meat on the bones in terms of being able to hold each other accountable if we step outside of what we're supposed to be doing as board members. And I'll give you an example, a personal example, if I may. Sorry, it's going to be a me thing, Ms. Morgan, but I was criticized recently for writing a letter on behalf of someone who wants to be appointed to the vacated seat as a result of Larry Kiker's death. And my first reaction was to call the attorney, and I think it was you that I called, to ask whether I had violated any kind of an ethical code in doing that. Because when I did it, it didn't feel wrong, and that's usually how I, how I guide my behavior. If it feels wrong, don't do it. And it didn't feel wrong in the moment when I did it. But when I was criticized, I thought, oh, no, what if I did break the law? So I called, and I got the opinion that, you know, it was on my, my letterhead. It was not on the board's letterhead, and I was not representing the board, and so I had not violated a law. But had I done that, I would expect you to hold me responsible. I would ask you to hold me responsible. You know, when I, when I played basketball, we held each other responsible. If you missed a pass, or you missed a pick, or you, you let the ball go on defense, or you weren't in the right position, you, you hold each other accountable. I think that's part of being a team. And so I think, you know, I made it pretty clear in my comments what I'd like to see happen. And I'd like to see if we can reach some kind of consensus today to put the attorney, ask the attorney to get to work on creating a, a policy or amended policy 1.5 to include a fiduciary duty and a list of options for us in the event one of us steps outside what we're supposed to be doing according to the law.
Okay. So conversation around that, Mrs. Gittens?
Yes. Well, I disagree with that. I think there, as you mentioned in your comments, that there's no other elected entity that is doing that. And I think that's for a reason, that when we get into legally censoring or whatever it is and watching over each other, I think as elected officials, we are under the law and the jurisdiction of the law. And if we break the law, we will be, you know, recommended and dealt with this as appropriately for breaking the law. I don't really feel that that's going to help us as a team. I know it wouldn't for me to be thinking that if I do something wrong, that one of you is going to come up and say, you know, I'm going to report you to the authorities or whatever. And like I said, I think there's a reason that all of the other entities have not done that. I, I just don't think that it would help to further any type of team, building team work and collaboration. That's just how I would feel.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
So I have a question for Ms. Patrica. You said legally sufficient should be determined in accordance with the Helen credibility factors. Can you elaborate that, on that a little bit for me, please?
So courts, I believe, based on information that I've received, that courts have set forth factors that should be determined. If a complaint comes to us, we can use those, those factors to determine whether it is a legally sufficient information that came in front of us to prompt, you know, discussion by the board as to whether an investigation should take place.
So I, to me, it sounded like, when I read this, there were two different things you were talking about here. One is our ethical obligation and responsibility, and the other is amongst ourselves. And the other is, what is our responsibility as a board when things are brought to our attention by the public?
Well, in terms of the policy, I'm talking about our responsibility to each other as a board.
Right.
When information comes to us from the public, I believe we have stepped outside of our role at times, and so that, that's sort of a separate issue.
Okay.
This is just about creation of a policy for us.
Okay. Thank you.
And the published policy requires, what would it say?
It would, it would provide us with a fiduciary, or, or hold us to a fiduciary duty. Right now, we don't have a fiduciary duty under the law. So what does that mean? It means a fiduciary duty doesn't just require you to act, to do certain things. It also requires you to act when something hasn't been done. So under these circumstances, if, if, for example, I had written that letter and it was an ethical violation, the rest of the board has a fiduciary duty to bring that to the board for discussion. Right now, we don't have that kind of a duty. Right now, I could do all kinds of bad things, and there's no duty on any one of us to bring that to the table for a discussion. And that's really all this is, is, is a discussion. If the board reaches consensus after that discussion takes place to, to seek an investigation or to take it the next step, great. If the board doesn't reach consensus to do that, then it doesn't. But it gives us the option. Right now, we don't really have that option. And I'm not talking about, I disagree with you, or you said I don't like your blue shirt, or you said something that I thought was mean. I'm not talking, I'm talking about actual legal violations.
So let's, let's go around. I saw a couple of hands. I'm going to come this way. Ms. Fisher, did you want to finish your comment? Okay, please, and then we'll work our way to your left.
So give me an example of a legal violation, of a board member's legal violation.
Well, I, I would use the example of me writing that letter. Had that been an ethical violation, had, had I broken the law in doing that, then it's up to you guys to bring it to the table and say, Chris, we believe you did something wrong there. And then, and then we seek a legal opinion from our attorney, whoever it is, and then we decide how to proceed.
So I think in our mandatory annual ethics training, we are cautioned about those things that might come under that laws, that might be not legal, taking large gifts. And so I think it's pretty clear and expressed, and I think that that information that's provided for board members across the state mandatorily should suffice. So I'm, I'm just not clear on how creating a policy in this district to govern one another would be helpful to us as a government team.
Well, I did give some very specific examples in my evaluation as well.
So a couple, thank you. I saw a couple of other hands, Ms. Gittens.
So I couldn't support this either because I don't think we have the legal authority to even talk, to have that ability to do anything to our peers. And the, the authority belongs back to what's legal, and I don't, I can't make that determination. And I don't, I don't expect to, expect my peers to do the same. So I don't understand where that would be coming from.
Okay. All right. Additional conversation. I saw a few more hands over here. Mrs. Gittens?
Well, mine was just that, you know, I'm not a lawyer. None of us are. So we, I mean, the, the added burden of trying to watch everyone and see, okay, was that legal or not? I'm not taking on that responsibility. And I don't know if it's something that we need to give our attorneys to, to watch us. And I do believe, though, that if, if we step out of line, the attorneys would be aware of, if someone asked the question, is that okay for Chris to write, Ms. Patrica to write that letter? Then it's their responsibility to tell us their name and who led them.
Okay. Their comments?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off what Jer Gittens just said and ask a question, got to earn your keep, to, to our lawyers. Would it be appropriate, instead of bringing it to the full board, that if we become aware of something that we feel is borderline, or maybe has crossed that line, if we just say such and such has happened, is this something that we could be, as a board or as an individual, be liable for? Would you be able to offer an opinion on that if we?
I could give you some direction. First of all, with regard to ethical violations or ethical questions, it's the individual who's responsible for ethics.
Ethics.
Just like it's the individual who's responsible for sunshine violations or public record violations. The, there is a commission on ethics that the state has. Typically, if there's some activity or action that occurs, and there's a question, or we would have a question as to what that action was and whether there was a technical violation or more than that, then we would, we would go to the commission on ethics and ask for an advisory opinion. So that's-
We, you mean to-
The lawyers.
The lawyers.
Us. That was one, that would be a step we would do. It has been my practice that if I'm aware, for example, of sunshine questionable activity that may be existing by anyone, it would be my practice to send a reminder to the board as an, as a group, being that the sunshine law requires this kind of activity, and you just be reminded of that. It's not my job to accuse anyone of any, or our job to accuse anyone of violations of any type. Nor can we determine that. And it's, and it's personal, as I mentioned. The violations, ethical violations are punishable to individuals, not to the body. So if, if there was a questionable action, you can go to the state attorney's office. You can go to the board of ethics. There's places to go. Typically, the bodies don't, a particular body doesn't take action on that unless you see something that may require directives. If it was so significant that something might be necessary, that, you know, that could be an option. But candidly, as it relates to your all elected officials, the governor controls elected officials and takes action appropriate to, whether there's a criminal activity or something of that type, and is the only one who can suspend or remove someone from, as an elected official. Even if you were to vote to censor someone, that means candidly, nothing, other than you took that action.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I saw a few more hands. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, so two things. First of all, transparency. And one of the things this board talks about all the time is transparency. The absence of, what I think Ms. Patrica is saying is, the absence of that conversation about how we are conducting our business is, is not transparent. And so how do we build into our process a responsibility to be transparent about our actions and how they reflect on the board? So that's one comment. The second comment I want to make is that we, and this is a different line, a different bullet, but, you know, our board values are, where do I have this? I know it's reliable, responsible, respectful, role models. Oh, that's unfortunate. I thought we had talked about that. Anyway, all right. Well, it's, SEL is what?
The social emotional learning. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, the reliable, the responsible are part of the social emotional learning program that's being forwarded throughout the district.
Okay. Well, then my point would be that we need to adopt those values because we shouldn't be having different values than we're asking people in the district. And I just feel like transparency for this board has been trumping respectful, reliable, ready. And so I would like to see us have a conversation about what our values are and where transparency is in that.
Right. Other thoughts? Mrs. Jordan?
What I would like to just say is that I feel like a lot of times, we just, we repeat things that we have already discussed. This has already been in a conversation before, and I know that Robbie, who's no longer here, did state to us, you know, that you have the opportunity to report it to the ethics commission and do what we feel is right as, as an individual. But what I really believe is that we just, because of, we are an elected official, that we do need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. We have to do that. And we have to hold ourselves accountable to our stakeholders and our, and these kids in this community, and each other. So I think if we could do that, I mean, that right there would be a plus.
So the opportunity, we're capturing this in notes at this point so we can go ahead and have a further discussion around those items. Any other conversation relative to the opportunities that exist? Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes, I, to piggyback off Ms. Jordan, I absolutely agree that we need to hold ourselves to a higher level to be role models, if you will. However, there's, there's a difference, there's a fine line between, let's call it, ethics, ethical behavior that is, let's say, offensive to fellow board members because of the nature of comments versus legality and illegality. For instance, right here on this board self-evaluation, I was very disappointed to find that there, the first part in this dimension, a large part of it, number four, was a specific attack on a board member, something that has come before the board. We've had people talking about ethics and, and what we should do and what we should keep to ourselves. and what we should keep to ourselves. And yet, even going back to the issues that surrounded Dr. Atkins' recent evaluation, before we, as a board, had a chance to workshop that, I know I, and many others of us, had all kinds of news media coming to us asking for comments. I said, "No, I'm not going to comment. You can read what I said." I'd be happy to elaborate once we have shared that with the rest of the board. However, some board members took it upon themselves to self-evaluate in the media, calling one of our board members' comments on Dr. Atkins' evaluation as absurd and a political stunt. I don't find that helpful to us as a board. It's one thing when we're here discussing as a whole, but we're trying things in the media, and I think that's wrong. And I think, if anything, that should be something that, as a board, we need to have a full discussion on.
So as we continue to have this conversation, two things I want to share. One is, there was a mention about core values, and maybe they, we need to develop those. I will share with you that we do, as we have a vision and a mission and core values. So we could make sure we send those out, just to make sure everybody, everybody's aware of those. That would be one. And then the second thing is, we want to make sure that we hear from everybody. I know there's a few hands that we saw, but we also want to make sure we get out of here in a reasonable time. We're certainly available to you. We'll be here as long as you would like us to be here. We would like to continue the conversation and make sure we capture all dimensions today. So I saw a couple of additional hands up, and then, then we are going to move forward. Ms. Givens?
Just for this, this second question, the, um, Ms. Patrica, did you want to make a motion on that, Ms. Patrica?
Can't, can't do that in a workshop.
I mean, due to, as a board, and it does sound like we have--
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else in the contextual dimension? Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is Dimension Two, and that is educational. So to take a look at some of the indicators, board requesting decisions to be postponed until further information can be obtained. Looking at board member responsibilities, making sure that we're giving and reviewing information, materials, agendas, participating in professional development, which we've talked about, I know, a significant amount of times that we've been in workshop, participating in board discussions about what we should be doing differently as a result of our actions, et cetera. So we'll certainly open the conversation around strengths. What are some oper-, or some strengths that you see in the area of educational indicators here?
I would like to say that the process that we just started with the agenda review, I think would help this piece because it will lessen some of the meetings. It will improve the communication process, as we've discussed before. So I, I think that will help with our education process. And there have been some other suggestions, and it's more than that, some, about the number of meetings, and all that you brought up before. I'm working on, you know, adding that into this one.
Thank you. Any other items for strengths?
I would agree entirely that the new system we have in place for reviewing the agenda in advance of an action meeting is very helpful. It's excruciating for me to sit there and have materials I've already read sort of read back to me. That being said, I think that it's going to lead to a, a much deeper level of understanding of the issues that we'll be voting on at action meetings. So I, I take my hat off to you. That was fantastic suggestion, and I think that it's really gonna, I, I just think it's gonna allow us to move forward in a more knowledgeable way, and, and, and the, sort of the perception that different people operate with different information will be completely dispelled.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. I saw your hand.
And I, thank you, Glenn, because it helped me, being out of town, I was able to watch the, and listen to it last week or whatever. So it was, so it was smooth for me to be able to move forward, come in on Tuesday and, and be able to--
And be ready.
Yes, so it was very helpful, and so I really, really appreciate you doing that. I did have some thought that maybe, instead of having, and I, and I think I might have said this to somebody, maybe do that sometimes on Monday before the meeting, because when you have a meeting during one week and then another, then you're, you're not able to actually, you can miss and watch the video, so I guess that did help. So, which is my thought process, that possibly Monday, have that overview, and then Tuesday, you know, and then you're only having a meeting in the same week. So someone could take a vacation and not really miss the meeting, be a tenant, because I would prefer to be here than watch it on the video. But I would still have the opportunity to do that.
So you like the process?
Yes.
Maybe we could look at some of the associated timeframes with that. Okay.
Other, other thoughts?
Well, the only thing with that is, though, if you do it on Monday and you have questions, how do you get that information back in a timely manner for you to be ready for Tuesday?
That's what I talked to Susan. I said, "It would be nice to have the draft maybe before." It's hard to see in two days by to get here by, you know, sometimes, because I work long hours. So it's, I'm reviewing stuff at three o'clock in the morning. That's not always very beneficial. So that, that's all, you know, I would allow the weekend. You got the draft, you know, and have a little more time to be able to review the agenda. That's all. And it was just a thought. It's not--
Making a note. Yes, ma'am?
The comment I have to that is that we're, we're working with staff and the superintendent in the middle to kind of get everybody's schedule down pat with this and giving up time that on the Thursday, if we have questions, that staff then has time to come back and give that with us, with some of the answers. And then in future, unfortunately, because of all the requests for workshops and briefings and all, we may have to have, you know, an additional workshop day. But at least we've got that one day that's set, three days after we get the, the agenda, that we know that that is a day that we have to be here. It may be a half day if it's only the workshop, it may be a full day if it's a workshop or training. It's kind of set.
All right, thank you. Any other strengths under the area of educational? All right, so let's move on then to opportunities. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Morgan, and then we'll move to Ms. Skins.
So we haven't had, so we're six months in, I think, at least on this board. We haven't had any workshops with staff on the Envision 2020, on the action plans that were taken, brought to us the previous year, outcomes that, you know, we have seen, and any proposed adjustments to that. So I think our responsibility is to make certain that students are achieving, staff is being supported in a way that furthers student achievement. That's all in the, in the plan, and in six months, we've not had one conversation about the plan. We need to schedule that. And I don't, I'm not saying it has to be done today, but I think it's really helpful if you, as a board member, see something that you would like to talk about in the strategic plan. If you know that component's gonna come up in a board meeting four weeks out, then you can sit on it. You can wait. You can, you can manage the information you want to bring to the board as opposed to trying to drop it in, you know, whenever you have the opportunity to drop it in. I just think from a managing our, our time and our resources and doing our job effectively, we, it would be helpful if we knew the landscape in front of us.
Okay, thank you. All right, other opportunities within the educational domain? Yes, ma'am?
Looking at number two, conducts an explicit examination of its responsibilities, discussing the board's role in district management. And then down to number eight, discussing the effectiveness of our performance. I think that kind of, I'm tagging along on Mrs. Morgan's comments because I think we have not been focused exactly on that. And I'm, I'm not sure that we, as a board, have come to an agreement about what, what are our priorities and what are our goals. Of course, they are in Envision 2020 and Envision 30, uh, 2030, and also, you know, I've already, respectful, all of that. But we haven't put that to paper. We haven't actually verified that, that we, as a board, are on that page. And I, I really feel like that's an opportunity for us, and hopefully, we can sum that up for today.
As we think about next actions moving forward, that could be part of that conversation, certainly today. So we, we can make that happen as well. Other opportunities? Yes, ma'am?
I guess, I don't know. It's just me that's confused. I thought that when we had our first meeting on the Urban Board Team, that that's what that was about, is to kind of decide where we're going for the year. And I, you know, I don't know if I missed something, or, you know, wasn't told something or whatever. But there was never a, "We have to do this, and we, we need to have a workshop on this, and we need to have a workshop on this." The concern that I have is, is after the fact saying, "Well, we, we never did this." But it never comb up as, we need to schedule it, you know, in an earlier date. So I think our opportunity is, we need to have some type of plan or whatever. If it says, "In the first quarter, we do this, and in this month, we do that." And to my understanding, I don't know that I haven't seen it, that it exists. It says, "By this time, we need to have done this, and by this time, we need to do that." And it was one of my thoughts to do something like a manual or a document or something, because next year, we have an opportunity of having some new people on the board. We don't know. And every two years, that happens. So that was one of the thoughts that brought about the strategic plan, the board strategic plan options that we're using. But we don't have, and, and, and I will admit, I didn't know that, okay, by this time, we need to do this, and we need to do that, and I was never told that. So we need to get it down on paper.
So this is an opportunity, absolutely. Yes, ma'am?
So as we, and we have our policies and our protocols, which serve as a guide. And as each time we reorganize, it, it's been my understanding that we would decide as a team, you know, what exactly is our path for this coming year. The other thing that, for me, has been very helpful is the trainees through Florida School Boards Association and the patients which remind you of that. So I think we can take a look at that and, and take that next step to pull ourselves together and at least have that roadmap for ourselves for the rest of this year.
And I'm going to jump in just real quickly as facilitator. One of the decisions that was made relative to the self-evaluation was to push this back just a little bit. So normally, I think typically, once the board has conducted self-evaluation, then we have established goals. We had some new members come in when we would have normally done that, and so we did believe it was in the right interest of the group. If you're going to evaluate, how do you do that when you're just new? So it wasn't really fair and appropriate at that point. So it was a conscious decision to move this back a little bit. So today would be very appropriate to start the conversation about goals based on our evaluation. So just a, just a, an editorial on that. Mrs. Morgan?
So I guess my question of the people who were elected in '18 is, you come in and you know what your responsibilities are as board members. How did you, and, and I assume all of you were actively engaged in the school district at one time or another, and knew how the board worked. How did you expect to do your job? In other words, how did you expect to stay on top of Envision 2030? How did you expect to evaluate the superintendent? How did you expect to form a new team? Because in response to your question, we've not done that well here. I mean, we've not responded well to the need to do that. I think for 2020, we have a, we have an obligation to formalize something so that, you know, the, the new people who come in have an opportunity to say, "This is how I want to work on the strategic plan. This is how I want, you know, to do the superintendent evaluations," et cetera, you know. So I, I just throw that out to you, you know. What are we doing? I'll just follow up by saying, so are we doing the job you expected to do when you came on the board?
Yes, ma'am?
Actually, and it's going back to what I said before, the reason that I wanted to bring about that board strategic plan process is because, and, and I talked to the superintendent of that, the experience of coming on the board was, here's policies, but there was no timeline to that. I mean, it was just policy. There was not, this policy's done here, this policy's done there. And the reason that I felt we needed something more concrete, and Dr. Collins is going to talk about where we are in that process now, is that people will come onto this board and just start doing things, and start going to meetings, visiting schools, and attending this and attending that. And, but there was not a specific purpose, a focus that was given. And that, that's not in a policy. But if we use the strategic plan like we plan on doing, then when you come on the board and you, you know, choose or decide which one of the action items you're gonna do, then you're, you've got a focus. I think, and I really believe that part of our issue in meshing and molding as a team is that there were people that didn't know, there was not a focus. The people that were here already and had been working on the board had focused because they had things they'd been doing for two years, three years, eight years, or whatever. But when you come in, and, and then, not to be negative, but then you continually hear, "Well, this is what the, you know, previous board and the new ones and all that." That was detrimental to deciding what's the focus. So if I'm thinking, "Okay, this is what I'm going to do," and then somebody says, "No, that's not what we do." So I, I really believe that some of these processes are going to help us in the, now and in the future, to give everyone a focus, and for lack of a better word, a ring.
I'm sorry, but what process are we talking about?
The, where each individual board member is going to focus, the, the list--
Oh, oh.
Strategic plan projects.
Sorry. Okay, all right, yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I have a slightly different take on, on this because, you know, in prior election years, people may have seen, as people sat in the audience, they may have seen some different faces on the dais. But I think 2018 was a seminal year in Lee County voting because what we had is a clear mandate from the public that they wanted to see a change in the direction of the board. It was a year where a board member was unseated. It was a year when a candidate who was unofficially sanctioned by the board was resoundingly defeated. And so I believe that the new people coming on the board, at least perhaps a couple of us, we have a different idea. We have a different ideological background from the makeup of boards in prior years. And personally, just speaking for myself, I felt like there was a mandate that I heard from people that wanted to see a change in direction. And I think this is something that's key to getting to any dysfunctions or disagreements, or people who have been used to having it always done a certain way, having it done the way they wanted to have it done, that there's been a pushback, there's been a definite pushback on-- it done, that there's been a pushback, there's been a definite pushback on people that want to change the direction of this board, and by expansion, the direction of Lee County in how we deal with everybody out there, including our minorities.
Okay, so a couple more comments, I'm just going to swing around, so Mrs. Patrica, then Mrs. Fisher, and then Mrs. Morgan.
I may be a little bit of a funny here, but I think every elected official thinks that their election is a public mandate for change. I'm sorry, but, I mean, I felt the same way when I sat in the seat two years ago.
Any Democrats, if you have, sorry to interrupt.
This is a nonpartisan seat in which we all sit. So just, you know, I think, I agree with you, Betsy, I agree with you 100%, change needs to occur, nothing is perfect, change needs to occur. How do we go about making that change? We seek consensus, we have discussions, we bring things up during good of the order. That's not the way the board has always done it, that's Robert's Rules of Order. That's how we function as a board and as an organization. If there's an issue that four or more people want to discuss and want to seek change, we get consensus, and we direct the superintendent to gather information and bring it to us, we have a discussion, and then we make change that way. I hear a lot of sort of references to things that I can't wrap my mind around as being fact-based, I need facts, and you discussed protocols, Ms. Fisher, we don't follow our protocols, and that's fine, if we want to change our protocols, we need to have that discussion as a board, which we did during our reorg, but if we want to change our way of work as a board, we as a board need to decide that. And if we haven't as a board decided it, then I think it's safe for us to all operate under the assumption that the existing protocols are the guardrails that we use in functioning as a board. Am I making sense? Does that make sense?
Yes. So thank you, Mrs. Fisher?
So over two years, on having an election, we have a change in the board. However, the board continues to be guided by the Constitution, the Florida statute, and policy, and I think that policy 1.01 and 1.05 are pretty clear in helping us to understand what our responsibilities are as a board. Some of the training that we go to as a group also reinforces that by giving us the prescription for what board members do, and what the superintendent and his staff do. We oversee and monitor the operations of the district, and we set policy, and the superintendent and his staff administer, you know, whatever we ask them to do. You know, it says the board will direct the superintendent to establish a curriculum, establish benchmarking, graduation standards, all of that stuff, the board will direct, that's a constant, change is constant, and happens when changes happen at the state level, but the board, the responsibilities of the board, regardless of who the members are, do not change. And I think it's incumbent on us to try to follow those guides that are built in, and then we always have flexibility with individual situations and circumstances that come up differently, you know, every day. But I think that, you know, a new board is something that is part of our history and our program. Every two years, we're going to have new faces on the board, and people will come in with new ideas, and we do have an opportunity to share those and to advocate, you know, the vision and the mission is what we want to do, we want to be a world-class school system, and we want every kid to be successful, to do the best they can. That's our job, that is our job. So with that, I think that we need to recognize that and establish what we want to do as a board.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Morgan and Mrs. Juvenelli.
Yeah, in the context of what Ms. Fisher just said, I mean, given the legal parameters, given the policy parameters, you all received a mandate for change, what was that mandate? What was it that you brought, that you believe the public wanted you to bring to this board? Because I don't know what it is, so, and I would like to know, because if it does have an impact on our way of work, then as Ms. Patrica said, we have to have a conversation about our way of work.
So in response to that, before we move on to Ms. Juvenelli?
No, just not responding to that.
Okay, anybody else?
Oh, I have.
I heard a question, so I just wanted to make sure we gave time for that.
If that's appropriate. I really don't need another lecture on the way of work and the policies, I'm an intelligent individual who has read these things, but sometimes when you are going for a basic systemic change in a culture of a district, and that's what I am doing, that is, and I'm trying to stay within our parameters, but you know what, sometimes you have to push the limits, and I'll finish.
No, I'll let you finish, that's fine.
Sometimes you have to push the limits to get the kind of cultural systemic changes that I want to see in the district, since you asked that question, it's a little off-topic from what we're doing, but I am tired of the good old boy system, I'm tired of cronyism, I'm tired of some of the ways that things have been done in the past, and people that are protected or not protected, I'm tired of it, and I'm not sure, working totally within the system, how that's going to be changed, but I am going to do my darndest to stay in the system, to work gleefully, to be ethical, because as much as I disagree with some of the, let's call it the old ideas, since we're referred to as this board so often, as much as I disagree with those, I have not sent email blasts to people in the community badmouthing and undermining the district's work in the school board. I have not spoken to the media, I have not spoken to the media, or in public meetings, mentioned board members' names, and in a public meeting say, well, she's just very unprofessional. Can we talk to our friends, close colleagues? Yeah, but publicly, I have never done that, so I feel like I'm abiding by the ethics, but am I going to push? Bet your life I'm going to push, since you asked the question.
Let's get Ms. Juvenelli back over, yes.
I can agree with what Ms. Vaughn is saying, because every time there's an issue, we're basically told that we don't understand it because we don't know the policies. And going on what Ms. Fisher was saying before, I don't think it's that we don't know or don't want to do the policies, the policies are there, just like you said, and they are hard and fast, the laws are there, they're hard and fast. It's the how, and I believe that in our way of work, we have the ability to, as long as we follow the law, the how we do it is what this team should decide to do. Two quick things, one, back in December, we were storming, in January we were storming, and everybody likes to keep talking about that. In December and in January, I brought up the fact of doing some type of conflict resolution training, I brought it up every month, every time we started to do that. I was voted down because the group decided, well, we want to do FSBA training first. I acquiesced on more than one occasion, and participated in FSBA training. When Ms. Mercedes came from FSBA and did the training, one of the things that she said is the next thing you need is some type of conflict resolution and diversity training. As far as education, you know, it just keeps getting pushed back, and changed, and pushed back, and changed. With the change that I personally bring to this board, as a member of the board, I need to have you all understand where I'm coming from. And part of that is going to come from the diversity slash conflict resolution training, we're talking about education, we cannot put it off, we cannot say, okay, well, we'll do this later. It's not comfortable, it's not something that everyone may, you know, want to do, but if we're going to move forward, we've got to look at, looking deep down and saying, okay, what are we doing that we may need to stop doing? And I really believe that we need to work together to do some other training, not just FSBA all the time, but, you know, open it up and include the rest of us in the team, and agree to do some training that may be different from what you know or what you want, but is necessary. And the last thing I want to say is, when we do the reorg meeting, I think we need to sit down and discuss how and when we do that, because we were elected on the 6th and on the 14th, we're in here, coming up with organization for the rest of the year. I don't know the answer, I don't know when to do it, because we have to do it right away, but is that the right time to do? So that's my thing.
Okay, so a couple of things real quickly, Cindy's been adding a few opportunities, and we are making some notes, I do also want to direct you back to educational, and I'm just going to throw out there, you may want to look at number four, because number four could potentially be a strength, participating in and service programs, and so that may be a strength you want to add, I leave that up to you. Okay, Ms. Juvenelli, thank you for being patient.
Well, actually, I'm going to be able to piggyback off what she was coming with. So when I came on board, FSBA did that particular meeting, and it was very different
With the reorg, yes.
Than when it was done in 18. So my recommendation, and that was, I don't know how easy that is, because I'm sure lots of people that, you know, the reorganization is happening because of the election, so, and how easy it would be to get, you know, FSBA here for our orientation, but I feel like that was very beneficial, because it did help me, I thought it was more helpful than what the 2018 new board members received. So, you know, that being said, I have to kind of agree with Ms. Vaughn on some of the things she said, because, I mean, we recently have voted, recently, it was about three months ago, but we voted as a board to make a decision on the televising, and that is still continually being undermined, and I think as a board, once we make that decision, that's what our policy is, that it's the decision made by the board, and now, there's continuing to talk about the community, that is, you know, that, trying to change it, and we haven't even put it in place yet to even know if it's not going to work or work. So I think that it was a board decision, and we should respect that, and it wasn't.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mrs. Fisher?
Okay, so Policy 1.03 is expressly designated, designates the authority of the board. Number three on that says, the role of the school board is to act collectively, not individually. Individual members of the school board have authority to take official action only when sitting as a member of the board in public session, or when the school board specifically authorizes a single member to act on its behalf. So if you have changes that you want to make, you need to bring them to the board and get a majority agreement, or else, forget about it. I mean, and I hate to say it that way, but it's expressing the law, and our reorg is, that date is designated also for us, it has to be within a certain period of time after the election. So I'm going to just use one specific personal example, when I recognized that we did not have a comprehensive health education policy in this district, I started to advocate for it. Five and a half years later, we got the policy, because it took that long to get a majority agreement of the board to be able to do that, and that's the reality. So if you have specific changes that are going to benefit the students in this district and this community, please bring them up to us, so that we know what they are, and we can work in concert as a team to have that happen. Otherwise, it's never going to happen, and we're never going to be a team. And I, you know, as a former school counselor, I used to do groups with conflict resolution groups and peer mediation groups, and one of the rules was, you take your own personal agenda, and you take your own needs, and leave them outside the door in an imaginary paper bag, or you bring your issue to the table and resolve it together. That's the only way this board is ever going to work, and we have a lot of work to do in this district.
Okay. So, okay, please.
I just want to finish up what you said, if in fact there is cronyism, or a good old boy network, or any of the things that you said, bring it to us for discussion. That's a conclusion, and I've not drawn that conclusion, because I don't have facts in front of me that indicate that that is the reality in our district, so, you want to have that discussion? Do we have consensus to have that discussion? That's the first thing, the second thing is, we can't have this conversation without talking about the New England Patriots, right? Because they have six world championships, and the 2003 team that won was amazingly exciting. It had Bruski, it had Branch, it had Brady, completely different from the 2019 team, that is the current world champions, who had Edelman and Gronk and Burkhead and all them, right? So we are a different team. This board is this board, and this board has the potential to be great if we function as a board, instead of individuals who sort of throw out bombs, like, you know, drawing conclusions, negative conclusions, without first having had the discussion, and requesting information from the superintendent, who will then go to staff, and then we can effectuate change.
Mrs. Vaughn, and then we are going to move on.
I believe that they were brought to the table, we did not have sufficient time to discuss, but they were brought to the table in comments, I know, comments that were in my evaluation of Dr. Atkins, some of the things that I just mentioned. As for the analogy with the Patriots, I would prefer to give an analogy to Congress, to the way Congress operates, and the fact that a lot of people were talking about revisiting things that were from prior boards. Well, yes, things are going to be revisited from prior boards, because we have had an ideological change on this board, and I'm going to use what Ms. Fisher said, she was very patient for five and a half years with getting the comprehensive health test. I've been on the board six months, so it's going to take me longer to hammer away, and yes, I understand you have to have a majority vote, and so, guess what? When the board votes in favor of an idea that I've tossed out there, yay, we're going with it, but when they don't, okay, and I move on. I don't go back, because I'm unhappy that, for instance, a five to, a two to five vote on televising doesn't suit me, I'm not happy with that. I don't go back and say, hey, advisory board, this is what's happening, and are you sure you want this? The time for that was before, to get input before, and there are a lot of these things that are going on, there are a lot of things that when, they're not suitable to everyone, that there's where we break down as a team. Am I happy when there's something I would like, and it doesn't get passed? No, oftentimes I expect it not to be passed, but you know what, it's put out there, and that's, you know, it's the same thing, think about Congress, I think that's a more apt analogy than the New England Patriots who are working for that Super Bowl ring. We're working for our kids, all of us.
So this is the perfect entree into the next area, so if you take a look at the indicators, I think we have identified a few of these, as we look at interpersonal, we're talking about how we handle conflict, we're talking about open and honesty, and not being in fear of being ostracized, or some other negative behavior. Once a decision is made, I think Ms. Vaughn just gave a perfect example. Once a decision is made, I think Ms. Vaughn just gave a perfect example of that, you know, we move on. So there are several areas on here where I think we can start tagging them as strengths or opportunities in light of the conversation. So would somebody like to throw out a few strengths based on what we just talked about? Yes, ma'am?
So I think that when we work in workshops with staff, we do good stuff. Which is why I keep hammering on, I'd like to see us do more work in workshops.
Any other indicators that you see that are at play?
If a decision is made, the board will vote together to see whether the decision is going to carry out.
Any other items, either strengths or opportunities?
I think we actually have had quite a bit of good dialogue among each other and with staff.
Any other comments relative to strengths or opportunities? As you look at the indicators.
I just want to say that different is not wrong. And many times, things that come up that have given that view. Different is not wrong, new is not wrong. I think the opportunity is to be more global thinkers. We, it's unfortunate to me that we spent at least the first three or four months getting over the fact of being the new, you know, this board and all of that. I think once we get past that and realize we are the board and that whatever actions are gleaned from this board, there's seven people's names and faces. It's, there's not one, it's seven. And I've heard that over and over again. I still think that it's an opportunity for us to really work. If you talk about working as a team, then in a team, if, we'll go back to, you know, your football. If, if the kicker needs to have some practice, somebody's going to go over and help hold ball and help him practice. But they're still working as a team. I, I just, I think we've wasted a lot of time pointing fingers. Not recognizing that different is good. And trying to learn how to enforce difference and different ideas.
Any other indicators that you'd like to advocate, either strengths or opportunities in the category of interpersonal? Yes, ma'am?
I just think we need to be more open to listening to others and respectful. I don't think that that's been easier at all. So I don't think people aren't respecting that. Therefore, you're not going to, you're not going to move forward with anything you can't do that. And undermining individuals is not going to benefit anyone, but the one person that has that agenda.
Thank you. Any others? Ms. Fisher?
So, number eight in this area says, "Board has established annual priorities and your goals for itself in alignment with the procedure manual." So I think we have an opportunity to do that and put it on record.
All right. Any other items, strengths or opportunities? Ms. Jordan?
I just think that we definitely need to be open to listen to what everybody has to say. But I think we need to stay on focus on whatever that topic may be at that particular time so that way we can move forward and, you know, get some things done. And of course, I mean, me personally, I do believe that there is a learning curve because this is a business. And anytime you walk into a new business or company, there are going to be things that I knew I didn't know and I'm learning every day still, and I will continue to do so. But, and that's why I appreciate when people do speak because that gives me the opportunity to learn and understand more things. But I just think that we really need to stay focused on whatever it is that we are on, that topic. We need to stay there, focus, get it done. We want to the next item.
Anything else in this domain?
Agree, disagree. We have to learn that, that too.
All right, we're on a roll. We're going to keep moving. Next domain, if you'll take a look at the analytical. There are, there are ten items. There are ten items. And we're going to ask you to take a quick look and identify some strengths or opportunities within the analytical domain. Ms. Morgan?
So I think our board advisory committees are getting stronger. And as, as we add real strength to those committees, our referring things to them for consideration is, is really important. And, and I will use this opportunity to respond to what's been said about the viewing the board advisory meetings. That's the one thing we didn't do. We didn't ask the board advisory committees before we voted if, how they felt about it. And so that's back on another topic. But I do think generally, the board advisory committees, financial, construction, well, they all are doing good work. And that supports what we're trying to do here.
So is there an opportunity as well to ensure that items are making their way to board advisories consistently? An opportunity and a, and a strength? Other items? Yes, ma'am?
I just, I kind of disagree. The board advisory board, to me, at the level, is that we are to, to help and to give advice. It's kind of the cart before the horse. That if the board collectively, as the governing body, decides to move forward on an item, to have to ask the advisory boards if they agree and flat out with it. We agreed five to two that we would have some type of recording of board advisory meetings. And I personally feel, and I'll go on record to say, if, if that's the board policy and protocol and you don't want to abide by that, then we will have to look for someone else to be on the board. I mean, it's not, you know, you're going to be on the advisory board under your terms. The board is, the advisory board is already existing and these are the terms. And, and that's fine if you don't agree with that. But I just, I just don't think it's, it's right for the advisory board to tell us as the governing body what we're going to do.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jordan?
What I would just say is that if that's something that we're looking at, it needs to be across the board. We can't decide that some things need to go before an advisory board before we vote on it, as such EDAC and hiring versus being filmed. So we need to, if we're going to take a tour of the advisory board to get their input, then we need to do that always or not do it.
And let me make a, so here's, now that when we talk about ensure items consistently go to board advisories, I hear they request we're on a process. And we may want to take a dive into Board Policy one point two zero to see if that currently exists. And so maybe that, we'll, we'll put that on our follow-up list to see what is specifically stated there. And if there's not an accompanying process, we'll make sure that that comes back to the board for, for consideration. Okay? Other comments? Other, I saw a few hands go up, so we'll work our way back around. This is Morgan and we'll work our way around here.
So back to what Ms. Jordan said. If we're going to be transparent and we're going to let the community participate, then we're going to be transparent and we're going to let the community participate. Period. So I was the first one to say that, I'm so sorry. I was the first one to say, my bad, when I realized that we hadn't gone to EDAC about the structural change. Because it really was, to me, important that they have the opportunity to weigh in. And I don't think any other committee should be treated any differently than EDAC. So if we're going to be transparent and we're going to involve the community, then we have to do it actively.
Ms. Vaughn?
I was just going to suggest, I know we have other issues that we need to talk about with our advisory boards. We, we haven't yet come to our revised, have we?
No, we are preparing to come back with you. We put a deadline. We're still waiting for.
I don't remember.
Last week.
But what, what I'm going to suggest is, because I think we have a lot of very legitimate comments here, that we maybe table it and, and get that discussion going ASAP. Because they need to get their applications in and.
Absolutely. We're supportive of that. We just received the feedback last week. There is one other board member. So we're happy to bring that board at the next meeting if you'd like us to do that.
So that we can have, because I think this is a very important discussion.
If you would like that at the next meeting, we can make that happen. At the pleasure of the board.
So priorities, okay? I, I sort of feel like we sit at the table and we say, we're going to do this. We're going to do it right away. And then we have another discussion about another topic and we say, we're going to do it. We're going to do it right away. And then we have a third discussion about a third topic and we say, we're going to do it. We're going to do it right away. And it is a priority. And then we end up, and I have, I don't think anybody is satisfied by the way we're sort of managing this process. So I, I, that, I'm just, that's my comment.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay. And I, and I understand your frustration. And yet every time we have a meeting, there's a plethora of, we need to workshop this and this and this and this. And I'm working with Dr. Atkins and staff to try to coordinate that and to put ones together that we can put together. When we sit in a meeting and say, we need to workshop this, it does take time to get that organized and to have. And the majority of the ones that came up in the last couple of meetings have already been scheduled or are in the process of being scheduled. Each time we meet, and there's another one, we have a list of things that are coming up. And we work on doing that as soon as possible.
So I would just like to respond. It would be nice to have the list. And it would be nice to know what priority that list is in. And it would be nice, as a board, if we had a new issue, we could reorganize the priorities if need be, depending on what staff tells us about their ability to respond in a timely manner. But, you know, the notion that we're working off of a list of, you know, a couple of months ago and then we're adding to it today, and is that what we're adding today more important than what we were talking about three months ago that we haven't worked out? I just think we need to see where we're going.
Would it, that be appropriate, Madam Chair, to have a consensus on building this?
I think it's a great idea to have a list of workshops. And it's a living, breathing thing that, that moves about as we have other people bring up ideas. So can we have consensus on doing a list?
A prioritized list would show consensus, no?
No. I just don't know why we need consensus of that. Just put together a list.
All right, then, let's have a list. Fantastic. Anything else in this item analytical? Strengths or opportunities? Let's take one last look and then we're going to move on. Yes, ma'am? Ms. Morgan?
I think one of the biggest stumbling blocks we had this year with, this, this school year was about the executive pay. And the short term versus the long term. And I, I think when, when you're, when we're doing analysis, I hope I've got this in the right place. Maybe I've got it in the wrong place, but. Now I've lost my thought. Oh. I, I just, I don't know how to get over that hurdle. We got stuck. We got stuck on a previous board decision. And the perspective or the context or whatever of that decision going forward was of no value to certain people on this board. And I think there, I don't know how we go about ensuring that every time we make a decision that we document or we establish in some way what the long-term context was in which that decision was made. Maybe we need to be, do better archiving of conversations or whatever. But it, to me, that was a huge issue. That was a short term, long term, and there was a total disconnect.
Thank you.
If we can refer back in the same section to number five. It is, the board is mindful of how its decisions on joint issue influence and impact future decisions.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right. So we, as a board, let me back up. The previous board should have been mindful of the fact when they made a decision to delay something, that it was going to impact our terms board.
How do you know that we weren't?
Because, I mean, I can only go on what we were told, that the board chose to hold off on a decision and do it at a later date. And then we were not aware when that date was and all of a sudden it just showed up. And it was on our, during our board's membership. So it does become, you know, an element of, of an issue to us because it happens when we're sitting in the chair. And I think that's the thing. I, I understand and I agree with what you're saying. We need to be more mindful of, if you do this now. If we make a decision now for something that is going to be here next, you know, two years, it's, it's going to overlap with possibly a different board. So we, that goes back to what I was saying about big picture. We have to look at, if we plug this in here today, how far is that, you know, going to reach out?
So you're saying that we shouldn't make a decision in two thousand and eighteen because we're going to have a new board in two thousand and eighteen and we need to be concerned about your ability to accept that decision? I mean, all right, well, that's what I'm hearing. So I was telling you that's what I'm hearing.
That, I, I'm not saying that, you know, you have to think about who's coming and they may not be able to take it. But when I say far-reaching effects, I'm talking about children in the schools and not the individual sitting where I'm sitting. But how is that going to affect us? If we do this today, how's that going to affect us way out? And if that's clearly stated, then whoever comes and sits in any of these chairs can read and, and understand and see, well, this is why we did that. The statement was made about the executive pay. Well, we didn't do that because we were trying to do the task and we didn't think it was the right time to do that. Okay, so somewhere that should have been at least mentioned.
So, but the point is, we had this discussion, didn't we? I mean, we looked at all of the pros and all of the cons of taking this step. And we made what we thought was the best decision at that time. Now, maybe the problem was that when it first came up, we didn't sit down and talk to you openly about it. We relied on the superintendent to convey to you because he sat in those discussions and convey to you all of the components that went into that decision. I, I just, this notion that a new board, and I'm sorry, I don't know what else to call you. I mean, I'll call you the eight, the notion that a twenty board can come in and look at a decision that the eighteen board made and said, hey, that's not in the long-term interest of the district and we want to revisit it. I, that's, that's just not what boards do. That's not our job.
But that was not the issue. The issue was not what decision we made. The issue was that we were unaware.
Okay, Mary.
So I think we, I think we've established this. Ms. Fisher, please.
I think I'll pass.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I, I'm not, I, I don't have any way of knowing what, what any member of this board is or is not aware of. Like, I come to this board with, with knowledge in my head and, and I use that knowledge to add to conversations. And, and I think that, I think the thing that's hard for me to live with is the accusatory nature of the lack of transparency or the lack of communication. I, I will use an example from our, our last board meeting. Dr. Atkins, you took our evaluations of you to your staff, to your cabinet, and you said to your cabinet, and you said to your cabinet, "These are the issues. Bring me back plans so I can bring them to the board," right? I didn't need you to tell me that that's what you were going to do because that is, that is my understanding of how a business functions. So if someone then accuses you of saying, "You didn't communicate to me that you were going to do that," I don't know how you can be expected to know that I didn't know that. Does that, does that, am I making sense? So I think it's, I think it's the accusatory nature of it. I'm not trying to keep any information from anyone. I have never had the impression that any member of this staff is trying to keep any information from anyone. There are a whole heck of a lot of things, Ms. Gittens and Ms. Fisher, that you guys know that I don't know. But I'm never going to accuse you of trying to keep it from me. Instead, I'm going to rely on your strengths and your expertise. Ms. Fisher, probably shouldn't say this out loud in public, but when we talk about mental health issues, I'm like, "All right, Mary's got it." Sorry, Ms. Fisher's got it. You know, like, I don't need to take a deep dive into that because I know you know it inside, outside, backwards, forwards, upside down. And I know that you're, you're my expert. Could I waste the time and learn a lot more about it? I probably could, but I'm never going to understand it the way you do. So I'm relying on her strength. And I think that's what bothers me. When the lack of communication thing comes up, or the transparency thing comes up, there is no active desire on my part, or that I'm aware of, on the part of anyone in this room, to keep anything from anybody. It's just, I'm not, like, clairvoyant. Like, I don't, I don't know what people don't know.
All right, so with that conversation, we might as well move into the next section because there are parts of this conversation that lie in these next indicators. So you'll take a look at the next area. Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I just want to think.
Number nine.
Yes.
I would really like to have it documented somewhere because it does talk about board request input from, and it says students and staff. And I would like to add to that, other stakeholders.
Okay.
I don't think we do enough of finding out the people that have to do what we come up with, what they think, as far as in the schools and students.
Okay, thank you. So we'll make a note of number nine in that area. Okay. Thank you. So we're moving into the next dimension. We're almost done, political. So this is being aware, just to exactly the point that was just made about impact of decisions on the community and on the other stakeholders. So we could also put that in this section as well. Are there other areas where you want to comment on strengths or opportunities relative to the political dimension? Yes, ma'am?
I think it's a strength that I feel this board is very political. And by that I mean being aware of what's happening politically. Thanks to all of our support, like Carol and Ashley and FSBA, we are very, very aware of what's happening politically with education. And that's a plus. The opportunity is not to be as political. It's like I tell people all the time, I ran for office, and I'm here for four years. I'm not running for four years. I'm working on what we have to work on. So everything is not political. And I think we focus on that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Fisher, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think that we do maintain communication with key community leaders, not only political, but many of our community leaders through our cooperation and activities with different boards. And then, of course, I think that we do ask for stakeholder input by inviting people to board meetings and presenting town halls and other educational opportunities for people to come and hear about what we're doing. And we do make an effort to advertise in the media the successes of our students and our staff members. So I think that that's a plus. Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
So I want to talk about the special interest groups. And I think this also ties in with communications. There's a chain of command that should dictate our lines of communication. I'm just going to shut it off. I am so sorry. It's all spam. It's all, you know, this is, this is what's driving me nuts.
There's an app for that.
No, I have it. Oh, yai, yai.
Now we got a laugh. All right.
Yeah, so, let's see, where was I? So communication. So there's a chain of command. We're not following the chain of command. We're not doing a good job. We're individually communicating with, with special interest groups based on our, based on our personal relationships. And I think what we desperately need is to understand, in the case of investigations, in the case of inquiries, where they go, who handles it, before they come to us. And that if it comes to us, basically, we have two decisions to make. One, the superintendent isn't doing his job. And we're going to ask the board attorney to hire an independent investigator to look into what's happening in the administration. Or two, the superintendent has resolved the question to the satisfaction of the board, and it's done, over. It's not revisited. And we don't have that clarity. And that is, that's a real problem for us.
Right, before we continue, I want to make a facilitator's note. We are into overtime with our self-evaluation. So I'd like to, like, know that we also wanted to have some items that need to be addressed. So I'd just stop and just ask the board, "What is your desire?" Would you like us to quickly move with this in the next five minutes, knowing that we have other business? Or would you, you know, we'll operate in the way that you direct us to do that, please? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I believe that this is so important to us going on with our way of work in our business that we need to take whatever time is necessary to complete it, not rushing.
Okay, thank you. I want to sweep, just wanted to get some feel from you as the board. Yes, ma'am?
I don't have any idea how many questions we're going to be asking of staff in the next part of the meeting. So I don't know how much, how long that's going to take. Do you know how many questions you've got to answer?
There was only, like, one, so it should go with.
Okay, and I will say I have childcare issues. I've got to be out of here now later than 4:40.
Okay, sounds good. So what we could do, just to throw this out, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Atkins.
No.
Please.
When we do two to four.
Yeah, that's when staff's here. So we can't go beyond four. It's not fair to staff.
Yeah, I mean, if you do, just, I mean, we just need to know that in advance. I, for example, had a, you know, a commitment. Now, it's a work of commitment here. It can be pushed. But, you know, it was a rather important one. So I'll step out and take care of that, but that's just an example. If we're going to have, you know, parameter on a meeting, then, you know, we plan around that schedule.
I agree. I plan my life around that schedule too. And it's hard when these go long because members of the public drive my kids home from practice. So I think as a courtesy to staff, we go ahead and do what was advertised, which is that we do the briefing piece. And then at the end of that, we come back, and as a board, we decide whether we want to continue with this conversation or postpone it.
Other thoughts? Okay, so let's take a look at consensus. All right, okay, thank you very much. Great, so we are ready to move to the next item.
Please, so we're moving on to the briefing of the board.
Oops.
Board docs and board agenda items.
Can I just ask a question about this process as we get started? So I was under the impression that questions would be sent to the superintendent, and then those questions would be sent to the board so that I would know, walking into the meeting, what to expect with regard to what's going to be discussed. And I didn't get that going into today. Is that an expectation I should have coming into this meeting?
Well, I hadn't discussed that. And the superintendent had been finally about, you know, repetition of the same thing over. Initially, the plan was that everyone would at least send in their questions prior to if they had it. So that only the staff that was necessary
Right.
to answer questions would be here. In order to facilitate and provide to work, we all have to send in our questions.
Agreed.
And so technically, there was only one question. There should be only be one person up here. Everyone is there. So going forward, please keep in mind, that is the process. We will not have staff come and sit and just listen to us draw line if they're not, it's not necessary for them to be here. So it puts the onus on us to review the agenda and get our questions to the superintendent as soon as possible. Now, the one...
But can I request that we, as a board, get a copy of those questions before we sit at this table for this meeting?
We can do that, yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, my intention was, if I were to add them, send them to you, but also add them to the agenda on this item, so that they're there.
Okay, great. And I didn't waste your time by emailing you, "I don't have any questions." I didn't waste my, your time by doing.
No, no, no. And I would assume if I don't hear, like, we see it's other people, there's no other questions, we can come here and just say, "Is there anything else on the agenda?" And if that's all we have, we say, "Oh." So you're fine with that. You're fine with that process. The one question, is it one question that you have?
I didn't get any questions.
No, I got any.
The one thing that I'm aware of would be the information regarding the recording of board advisory committee meetings. And I understand you had a conversation with Lauren because I know you guys were...
Yes, and I was just going to say, if I may, can I ask Lauren to come up?
Yes.
And to just bring us some today on here.
Because we got no questions.
We have a little show and tell. Our, we haven't named him yet, but he's over in the corner. And that is the system that we bought and put together for the recording of the board advisory committee thing. It's a chart over there. I don't want to walk in front of Adam, but I guess I can walk all the way around.
Okay.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
So this is the system that we purchased. It was about $1,270. We created the cart for it. We asked FMTC, and they helped us weld the piece on it. So we have the camera up here. And it's a, basically, it's just a conferencing system. So what'll happen is that whoever is the liaison for the board advisory committee will set up the two microphones on either end of the table so that we can get everybody's audio. The camera will record the video, and it'll go right into the computer. And then the process after that will be, someone from my office will take it and upload it to YouTube. And then the YouTube link will be placed on the board advisory committee pages, along with the minutes and the agendas. It's one little extra step to do the YouTube part. But the reason that we wanted to do that, while it'll take slightly longer, is because that way people won't actually have to download a file to their computer or try to download a file to their phone or their tablet, which is a lot harder to do than just clicking on a link and watching it.
And our timeline is 24 hours.
So the time, yeah, so what would happen is if the advisory committee would happen, and within 24 hours, the link would be posted to the advisory page by the liaison to the committee, to the advisory committee. So we have the process in place. We have tested it out. We were going to formally test it on the actual, not a board advisory, but a site selection committee that we have coming up a week from Friday. But the questions that we had that Mrs. Gittens and I were trying to answer were, one, when did we want to start it? Has communication gone out to all of the advisory committees that were doing it? Because that was the one thing that we didn't want to walk in and start just, "Hello, we're here," without notification. And then the other option that we had talked about was whether or not we wanted to wait until the new board advisories had been seated for September, I guess, or whatever we were talking about with the, so that the expectation was very clear as what we were doing moving forward. So those were the kinds of things that we were waiting on. And once we have that information, we can move forward with whatever.
Okay, can I go sit over there? Go sit, go sit. Okay.
Questions about the process? Yes, ma'am?
I don't, I was going to bring this up, but go to the order. But there's been a lot of talk about discussions in finance advisory last night. We're talking about me. I went to finance advisory to give them the opportunity to provide feedback and input on this issue because I've heard other board members do the same thing. And I wanted them to have the same opportunity that other advisory committees have had to provide input on this. They, they made a recommendation that the board reconsider taping advisory committee meetings. They don't feel comfortable with it. And, and my bad. I'm really sorry. If I, if you get the impression that I'm questioning a previous decision of the board, that was not my intention. My intention was to give that committee the opportunity to provide feedback. As I, I think, Ms. Morgan, did you get that feedback from Edeck as well?
Yes, well, I brought that when I had sat in for Ms. Morgan at her meeting because I was sharing what was going to be taking place. And I did bring that before the board, that they did not want to participate.
So I was really just doing what I thought we were all doing in our committees and bringing it to them for feedback. So may I look you all in the eye and say, "My bad. I'm sorry." That's, it was not my intention to question a decision of the board or to try to overturn a decision of the board. I was genuinely trying to get feedback. And I know that that tape has been public records requested. You know, you'll hear that on the tape. I was simply asking for feedback from the committee, so my bad.
And I listened to, and I did, did hear, so the concern was, like was mentioned before, that the board had come to a decision.
I've apologized.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not going that way. I'm just saying that to the board. Other comments about the situation? Yes, ma'am?
So I've been hearing comments about some of the board advisory committee meetings. And I think we need to be, we don't have a lawyer sitting there saying what the lawyer says in our board meetings about how people will conduct themselves, how they will speak about other people. And based on what I'm hearing about some of the committee meetings, I'm not sure that, one, people will be as honest as they've been in some of these meetings if they're being taped and they know it's going to go up on YouTube. Or, two, whether they'll participate at all. So I just, I think we have not had enough conversation about this. It was a rush to judgment, you know, thing, and, and I, yeah.
Okay, so aren't these committees subject to sunshine?
Anybody can visit anytime. They're advertised.
Right, so I think that the fact that it is subject to sunshine, that they need to realize that is the issue. And that we're trying to appeal to the community. And to be able to do so is to be able to televise it. I think going in, we're, especially now since it's, now the summer's coming up, we have opportunity to notify the new applicants, and they'll be aware of it. And they'll see if we don't have any applicants, and then we can make that determination. But I think it still needs to say, as televised as this board made that decision.
So I feel like this is an example of what we do badly. I can't ask this board to reconsider this decision because I was one of the two that voted against it. If somebody wants to reconsider this, it would have to be one of the five that voted for it. And otherwise, the discussion is done. I was just reaching out to you to provide explanation as to why I did what I did last night. I'm not looking to overturn it. I'm providing you the information that was provided to me by the committee. And that's it. The issue is, as far as I'm concerned, the issue's done.
To make it public as well, like I said, I listened to the tape from last night. And one of the main concerns was the cost, which is why I asked Lauren to talk about that, that it is not an extreme cost. We're not paying overtime salaries over and over again. Can you address that, please?
It'll be a cost to begin with as we train everybody. But the idea is, is that if we can make it work, the liaisons to the committee who are already sitting in the meetings would be the ones that would operate the equipment. And so there wouldn't then end up being any extra costs over what we already pay now. There'll just probably be, it'll be a few hundred dollars in overtime while we train them for the first few meetings. Which is, you know, however you take. The only thing that we do have that I wrote in the thing is we only have that one system. And there are overlapping meetings. So when you do schedule the next time around, you would need to make sure there were no overlapping meetings. They could be the same day, but as long as there's like an hour apart, it's not that big of a deal. But we can't have them, like, from six, two, two or three different meetings at 6:00 to 7:30 because we don't have the capability then to record them.
Yeah, I just wanted...
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification about why overtime's gonna be needed for training.
Only because, well, I'll send my staff for the first few ones to make sure everything is working, okay? We just don't want to throw everybody to the wolves right off the bat. We just wanted to have some extra support for the liaisons.
That might be the case.
Yeah.
It might be a good thing for both the liaison and maybe, because right now, it's the secretary, right? That does the video, or the audio recording?
I don't know if it's always the secretary. Is it always?
It is the secretary that does it. So it might be a good thing for both the secretary and the liaison in case. I know you said you'll send your people, but if two people have knowledge and there is a glitch that between the two of us, something like that.
We probably would want to even train a third if we could, if there's somebody that sits in, if there's vacations or something like that. So. And that can be done during the day, so that's not that big of a deal. I just would feel more comfortable when we're rolling out to begin with that somebody from my staff is there for the first meeting. Maybe the second, just so we have that support there in case something happens. But it's not exorbitant of a cost.
So will that be put on their application that they will be televised? So that way there's, they understand that this is, they're signing on to that particular.
May be televised.
May be televised.
May be televised. Because if it doesn't work, it doesn't mean they're not gonna have a meeting.
Okay.
And then it's videotaped.
Film.
Yeah.
Two, it's not streamed live.
Correct. DAC is, DAC would not change. DAC is now. So DAC would not change. And then ISOC also isn't in the board advisory quote unquote committee, but ISOC is recorded and done this right here. So it would be recorded and posted, but not, not live televised. DAC would be the only one that would be live televised.
And Dr. Carter mentioned they are going to get back with us. We're going to have workshopping about the advisory board and policy. Once they get back to us with all the feedback. So some of these questions will be answered. How that will look in our policy will be answered.
Okay, I just have one more thing related to that. There's no prohibition for a guest to come in, for a visitor to come in and film, right?
Correct.
If they want to sit, right? So in essence, that could happen right now. And that's actually, if you, if you.
It has happened.
Want to talk about.
It has happened.
So if you want to talk about privacy and all of that, it's a whole lot more likely that somebody who feels compelled to go in and tape it on their camera, okay? Video recorded on their camera is going to share it in a different way from, it's gonna be on our YouTube channel. Because some of the things, if you look at, unless it's, unless it's everybody's kids, cute kids performing, not too many people look at us really, unless they really hate us. So, you know, that's another thing. I don't know if advisory members know that they, people can come in and.
And they can.
Do it on our own. Audio or video record. It's time.
For the sake of time, these, no, that's a minute. These questions and comments will come up when we do meet about the policy for advisory boards. So are we, and basically then we're not doing it. Are we trying it out before the end of the year or?
That's the direction we're waiting on from all of you. Yeah. So we're, we're gonna test it at the site selection committee just because it's helpful for us to know, know what we're doing and all that stuff. But that's the only thing that we've scheduled, so it's up to, we're waiting on the direction of the board as to when, when.
I think we're almost done with this.
Official meetings are done.
Okay.
I think there are a couple in June, but some of them did get canceled.
Some do go over summer. I don't know how many. There's not very many. Maybe we can pilot that. But I say, otherwise, wait till the new, till there are notice in the application and it happens in August. And I want to thank you for a solution. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, for sake of time, unless there's anything else that will be critical, a couple more things. Lauren was gonna mention about branding. On our agenda, item D2 about expenditure for branding. And I've gotten some questions, and I had a couple as well about the $350,000 for the branding. The understanding is it's like some of the other contracts, that that's our limit. But we don't necessarily have to spend that every year. And Lauren's gonna tell us what we have spent. It's a three-year contract.
So it's a three-year contract. This'll be the third year. And I put this to you in an email and I'm happy to share the document with any of the other board members. But it's a contract that's used by multiple departments as well as our schools. So it's not an exhaustive list. HR uses it for all their teacher recruitment stuff. We use it for public relations materials, crisis communication, branding and public reports. And schools also use it for branding materials for them. So likely High Acres uses that. And also some of the grants do use it as well. And then we have other departments that work through communications in order to do it, so, in order to use the ITN. So student assignment, we did all of the posters and flyers for the new kindergarten registration initiative that we did this year. Community engagement uses it for the SOS program, materials and the naming rights. Prevention Services for all of its communication of the prevention topics in relation to the ABCs and also to promote parent workshops. So we have a lot of other departments that will come to us and then we will use that money in order to help with public relations materials. You're correct in the fact that the $350,000 is a cap. It's not in the contract. It's just, it's an amount that procurement set. The reason that they set it that way, even though we've never come close to meeting it, is because we don't know whether we'll have a run of eight schools that want to decide to use it. And then this way, we don't have to come after the board to ask for more money. It's already there and available. But it still has to be budgeted for. So it's not something that you can just say, I'm gonna go and use them. If you don't have the money budgeted for it, then you can't use it. So departments budget for it. So, yeah. So basically, over the last two years of the contract, in FY18, the total expenditures were $164,142.65. And in FY19, the total expenditure was $195,137.25. The amount budgeted, I checked this, in HR is the same moving forward in FY20 as it was this year. And in my department for communications, we budgeted approximately $38,000 less for next year than what we used this year.
Okay. Is it possible, and this is kind of a dual question for the two of you, that collateral information that you just talked about, to put that as collateral on, you know, maybe on the board docs as a part of the documentation?
I have it as a document. I can send it to the board. I can send it to you.
I'm just thinking it will answer a lot of questions. Okay, any other questions about that? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say that when I saw this on the, on the agenda, I did a little digging. The state of Florida spent $76 million on branding through Visit Florida last year. I mean, $350,000 sounds like a lot of money, but we gotta have some perspective. In 2016, Lee Health launched a $2 million rebranding effort. And I understand that when we go through rebranding at some point in the unforeseeable future, it's going to be a higher figure. We haven't undertaken that yet. And they spend about, Lee Health, which is kind of our sister organization in the county, spends about $3 million a year on marketing. So I wanted us to have some perspective. And I wanna also, while I'm talking about rebranding, really throw out the idea of having a student competition for our seal. I think that we have amazing digital artists, artists in the district who are students. And I love priority marketing. I bow to them. Even when I disagree with them, I know that they know what they're doing. I just think it would be a great way for the community to get excited by adopting something that one of our students did. So I'll take that opportunity and throw that out there.
I just wanted to ask, so this is gonna be a continued contract. Obviously, we're gonna renew it next year. So that's all, you know, it's not something that's gonna go away, so.
Perspective and showing all the additional things that we weren't aware of that it's used for. And that we don't use the whole, you know, adds a whole different dimension to that picture.
And sometimes when we're calling it branding, you tend to think of it as just branding. But there's a lot of other things that we use.
That was, that was the key.
We've actually asked for the name, we can't change the name of it now since we're in the contract, but we've asked before when we do it that it really is public relations. It's, you know, because the branding part of it at some point is gonna be over. We'll have done that. We'll have everything. So it really is all about just the public relations part of things and the marketing.
The stuff with teacher recruitment is an example. I mean, there's some innovative things that they do that really help us pull from other areas a much, a much more cost-effective way than sometimes doing these big, major recruitment trips, you know?
Well, like just for the education, for the bus stop stuff over the summer, they're helping us pull together and put together an entire public relations plan and bring agencies from around the community together at the table so that once we get something, there's an easy way then to disseminate it out through a lot of different venues. So those are the other kinds of work that they do for us. It's super helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, staff. I think we have no further questions on that. Yes.
Just, just a couple other items, since we're, you know, not, not everybody's doing one-on-ones. There's some things that I wanted to bring in this group that would be normally those type of items. One is just looking at the Fort Myers High School situation regarding cheerleading. Based on the complaints that have been filed, there's a number of people involved in professional standards that, well, professional standards and staff has been named in that. So I really think there is a potential for a conflict of interest there. I've been working with Mr. Williams and he has recommended the use of an outside firm to really review that matter and then provide us with advice to move forward. So I, I'm going to do that and I just wanted to inform you of that. It is a firm that he had reached out to under contract prior to Mr. Dodik leaving to do, you know, these types of, take care of these types of work. It's Greenspoon Martyr is the organization. So someone who's well-versed in these types of things. So that's what I'll be doing and I'll keep you all posted. But we wanted, I feel at this point, it should be outside, independent of district staff. And so as does Mr. Williams. And we feel that that's the best way to move forward.
Has Ms. Hall been informed?
I wanted to inform you first. I think she's here. But we will inform her next, so.
Okay.
The other item, Madam Chair, I think on the diversity training, okay? Well, I, you know, just the one thing we wanted to bring to your attention. And it does have in the minutes from March 12th that, you know, the board reached consensus to direct Dr. Atkins to work with Mr. Edie and the board office staff to schedule board to participate in diversity and cultural awareness training opportunities. So, and we have been doing that. And, you know, so that's, that's why that's out there. You, there should be some options. And then Ms. Johnson has been working to take down what the preferences are, so.
And I spoke with Mr. Edie. He was here. And I will just read what he said. We will present the board with additional options for diversity training consideration. Our principals participated in diversity training in December. And our options will include a modified version of their training for the consulting group as well as unconscious bias training overview that you receive from the board office. And you, some people were requesting more information. There is a two-page document that does tell you what the unconscious bias does include. And that he's working with the trainers to get more information on the other part of that.
Okay.
And he did mention too, and I'll speak out of turn, that there is some, some grant funds that he does have available for this training. I know that the cost was an option for, a concern for some people. But there is a possibility of getting this paid for through a grant.
That is correct.
So we wouldn't have to come out of conflict.
So we're gonna proceed with that as scheduled on our calendar? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it was scheduled and then it was redid. So now we're, you were told we had to find out everybody's date. My understanding is that when we do training, once we agree on it, we give it to Susan and she schedules it. And I don't know what's different about, you know, this, but I keep hearing we need to put it back out to everyone.
You're gonna make a liar out of me if we don't hold that meeting, because I told finance advisory last night that we're.
I know you did. And I'm sorry. Thank you.
And again, I just, in full disclosure, that was just, that was my suggestion to the board chair that, that, you know, it's a different training. Get, get information out there. Someone had asked for cost at one point, so I thought that would be included. And then, so that we could maximize getting everybody to the training to give options. You know, we've, we've done both, I guess, if I really think back on, you know, how we've handled training. Sometimes we give Susan puts out options in terms of what's available. And the board lands on, you know, kind of the majority vote and that's what we go with the training. So recollecting that, that was just a suggestion that I had made in this one instance.
Well, I want to make sure too that, that it was concerned, did we get consensus to have it? So I'm gonna ask this again for consensus on having the diversity, the unconscious bias, the diversity training as soon as we can get it scheduled for everyone to attend. Can we have consensus?
Yeah, we don't need consensus. He just read the minutes to us.
You do have, you did have consensus.
Well, I thought we did, but then I kept hearing that we didn't. And I was given something and someone said we didn't get consensus. And it was just brought up in the discussion.
And you're, yeah, and it has four clarifications in your minutes, you know, on March 12th.
It said, "Board reached consensus to direct Dr. Atkins to work with Mr. Edie and the board office staff to schedule the board to participate in diversity and cultural awareness training opportunities."
Okay. All right.
So it looks like May 31st would be the best day for everyone, unless somebody has a sheet objection. I'm ready to put it as a whole on your hands.
I know that, yeah.
All right. Moving right along, because we are all in time. Any other discussions about any of the agenda items? And I will just reiterate next time, everybody reviews and your questions in so that we can move right along. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question that I needed to ask Dr. Atkins and.
Okay, was it regarding?
It's not specifically on this agenda, but it is about district business that's pending.
Okay. Let me ask you, can we finish this portion?
Sure. I just, I just wanted to.
That's okay.
Put it in there that I didn't have questions.
And we will, but I know that there's some people that will be leaving. So at least, I really think it's important for us to finish.
Sure.
Thank you.
And we are well on our way in this dimension, so thank you. So we're still looking at political with the indicators. And I think we were close to wrapping this up. If you'll just do me a favor and take one last look at the indicators and see if there are any other items that we did not include as strengths or opportunities. We want to make sure we give you an opportunity to do that at this point.
I've got, number one, the board awareness of impact of what we do, the impact on the community. I think that should really encompass not just what we do as a group, but what we do individually. And we have to be very mindful of our communication and how it does have a role.
Any other items? Thank you.
Can, could you repeat that for me, please, Ms. Gittens?
Oh, I was just saying, in regards to number one. Of course, those are awareness of the impact of decisions. And just that we need to be more mindful of how individually and as a group.
And as a group. That's what I wasn't positive. Okay.
Our discussions and et cetera, et cetera behavior does affect the community. And I do have to add to that. I've heard many times people talk about special interest groups and all. And I really, you're always gonna have certain people that are gonna speak up more than other people. Where I think it's a detriment is to continue to put that on individual board members and say, if I'm talking about, you know, bells on shoes and it just so happens that someone in the community just talked about bells on shoes, it does not mean that I'm collaborating. And I think it's detrimental to our teamwork. And I think it's detrimental to our teamwork to say, if I'm saying the same thing that you happen to hear someone else, someone else said, that we're linked together. Um, I don't think that's fair and I don't think that it is, uh, moving us forward because it does, um, it creates issues.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Patrika and then Mrs. Fisher.
I think it's detrimental for our team to deny that there is a group outside this district that's pressuring this board and this staff to disrupt the work of the district. I think, I think that's what's detrimental. I think that, um, the suggestion that was made, I believe it was by Ms. Morgan, to move us forward is to follow the chain of command with communications. And I think that we need to memorialize that chain of command i- in a policy. I know that other districts have policies. I, I spoke with Attorney Williams about that a long time ago. Um, I know that other districts have those policies in place and I think it's important for us to memorialize that so that I can have, um, some confidence going forward that my fellow board members are, you know, we, we have an investigation that's being conducted right now that's already been conducted twice. And, and again, you know, I said in my comments, I frequently feel like I'm sitting at the table and I'm hearing verbatim the emails that are sent to me by a special interest group. And, and I can't trust the motivations when I'm not sitting at the table with individuals who are thinking independently, but instead are being, from, in my estimation, wholly influenced by people who seek to destroy the work that's being done in this district. So I, I really do think it's detrimental to, to, to us to continue to pay attention to that.
Mrs. Fisher, she had her hand up and then Mrs. Hall, please.
Yeah, I just wanted a little clarification on, on that number one. Board shows an awareness of the impact, of the impact of these decisions that follow the community. So I, I thought I heard you say something about individually and as a board.
Yes.
Um, okay, because we don't make decisions individually. We only make.
We make, we make individual decisions to say what we say in public and in the community.
Okay, thank you.
I think we captured that, you know, the individual comments, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Hall.
Um, I have to respond to Mrs. Patrika because I did read your comment and what you just, um, said out loud. Um, I'm personally very insulted by that. I'm very insulted with the idea that you would think that any of us do not think independently. I listen, like all of us here, I listen to many, many groups. All of us listen to many, many groups. Um, the, the idea of, um, special interest group somehow has developed into a very negative connotation with a couple of people on this board. One big special interest group that I really listen to are the teachers. That's one special interest group. I have met several times, both as a candidate and as a board member, with a special interest group. Um, they're, I forget the name, but it's about taxes. And I listen very, um, respectfully to what they say. Most of what they say, um, it's not something I endorse, but I sit there and I listen to them. There are all kinds of people out there that have their special interests. But I think what you're referring to is you have the concept that there's a special interest group that, um, some of us are, um, adhered to and, and the goal of that group is to tear down the school district. Thus by association, you're saying that anybody that, um, might have any kind of association with the special interest group has that goal. I didn't spend 38 years in the classroom to tear down education. Quite the contrary, and that includes this district and every other school district in public education. And so when I read that fellow board members think of some of us as thinking, um, not independently, of being, um, influenced by special interest groups, i.e. groups that want to tear down the school system. I am totally insulted as an individual, so I just had to get that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Jevon.
And I think we need to be really careful on that common people's special interest groups. Um, for me, um, it's very, uh, my, valuable staff members are not special interest groups. Community stakeholders are not special interest groups. I think this is, attitude is demonizing and putting people down who are critical in, in this decision-making, making it, making it a, it's incompetent and lack of character for those that say that. I mean, we could start talking about other people's special interest group. We could talk about Benita Springs having a special interest group and getting their school they wanted and be, be a push by people that live in Benita. So, I mean, I don't think we do that. I think we have to respect the community and respect others. And when we do that, it will reflect people finally respecting us.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say.
I'm sorry.
I just want to say one thing. I think what happens a lot of times and we all get emails, but a lot of times, and for instance, I read one maybe 15 minutes ago and that was brought up here. So I think that's what it is. So when you, when you are receiving all these emails and you're reading and then they come up, that is what people see it as. Not saying that anybody's a special interest. March 12th, speaking about, um, the, um, filming, an email came across there and it came up. So this is what I'm saying.
And that relate. Parenting.
Can, can I just say?
That's what, when people see things like that, when people see that there's emails that come across, I'm not saying anybody's a special interest because everybody's special to me. I don't care who you are. But I'm just saying that you have to, people do look at that, though. They say, how can this person be saying the same thing that's coming out of one of our mouths? Whoever that may be.
No more true statement has may have been made. Everybody is special to you, Debbie.
They are.
I know. Okay, so I just saw him.
Maybe we said it first and they, they have heard us talk about it or whatever and people just take it. Um, the main thing is no matter whether you agree or disagree with these people, they're still citizens and stakeholders and taxpayers and they make it possible for us to sit here and do this. And we cannot, whether, I mean, I, I think back in teaching, there were kids in the class I just didn't like, okay? Because they were just really terrible, but I could not treat them differently because they, you know, talked back to me all the time or did whatever. We're, we're in an edu-, in an education business. There are going to be people that think different ways. The bottom line to it is all I'm asking is that we as a team, as a group, not put that on us, on any one of us and say, oh, you're just listening to this. If you feel that way about what I said or what someone else said, just keep it to yourself because it's not pushing us forward. It's bringing us back to continue to say, well, you're in this pot with this person that's doing this. So I, I don't know. I just, I think we don't deny anyone their voice.
Your 20.
So, and Lori?
All right. So I appreciate the comments, um, absolutely. And we, these are important things for us to talk about. It's hard conversation, there's no doubt about it, but I think it's important for, for these items to be discussed. So we are going to transition to our last dimension and with the idea toward next steps. So if we can take a look very quickly at the indicators relative to strategic and, um, I'll entertain strengths and opportunities so we can start moving toward next step. Yes, ma'am. Please.
Yes, since a couple of people have asked me, I don't know if you have to.
At 4:40, yes.
To, uh, listen to them first or?
No, I, I would like the, like the.
Yes.
To be concluded by then. I don't think I should be.
For sure. Okay. So I think we're going to move pretty quickly here pretty well. So if you'll take a look at the indicators and we'll entertain strengths and opportunities. Ms. Morgan?
Well, the strength is that the superintendent really does have a process for bringing the board up to date on the strategic plan and, um, changes that have been made in response to, to, um, action plans that have been successful or unsuccessful. So that's, that's pretty much embedded. Um, what else do I want to say? Um, uh, that we are a numbers-based organization that when we talk about school progress, we look at the goals, we set out goals and then we look at progress relative to those goals. Um, yeah, I'll stop there. There's more, but I think, I think from a strategic point of view, we do pretty good stuff. There are some exceptions.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Fisher?
So, um, at this point in the year, the board asks the superintendent to articulate decisions for the district's future. And so we will be able to follow to hearing about that tomorrow morning. Um, with our strategic plan, we do look ahead at least five years from now. Um, which planning. An opportunity might be that the board set clear organizational priorities will be here ahead.
Yep.
And, um, I'll save my other comment to the end.
Thank you very much. Other items, strengths or opportunities within this domain? Mrs. Gittens?
Opportunities, stop accusing.
Other items? Mrs. Morgan?
Well, we've covered it. Oh, sorry. It's already up there. I must not have been listening. Apologize.
Any others?
Okay, so, um, I, I would like to say that we have spent literally hours retashing awareness. Everyone is a special interest group. I mean, we tag the students, we have the staff, we have the teachers, we have the bus drivers, we have some of our, uh, community committees who are special interest groups. We have many of them who are working with us now on our safety and mental health plans. So, and we always listen respectfully, I hope, any public speakers who come to our meetings. They have that opportunity to do that. I, I'm concerned that, um, the perception of the community about this board is not healthy right now because of the fact that we have a lot of this conversation happening at official board meetings that is based on personalities and personal, personal criticisms of one another. And I need to say that this is something new for me after my lengthy tenure on the board and it really needs to stop. I mean, it's like, I'm going to say, we each need to get over ourselves so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, um, strengths or opportunities here?
Can we start to talk about the business of the district? Can we start to talk about hiring an attorney, legislative platform, board advisory committees? Can we start to like work? Please, I beg of everyone.
Those are, those are all scheduled, I mean, being scheduled.
I, I, I'm sorry. What does stop accusing mean?
Um, if I can go further with it, but basically stop accusing each other as a team of you did this or you're talking to this one or, uh, this is why you're in that. Um, uh, you're, you're just taking things too personally, uh, you know, take yourself out of it. Uh, you don't, individuals don't know the feelings and why people do what they do. So my thing if we're going to move forward is to assume that each of us has the best, um, the best thoughts at heart when they're doing something, not that they're trying to tear it up. We have said too many times that this person or that person is trying to tear the district down. And I just said at the meeting last week, I don't think anybody's trying to do that. But the constant, when we get to an impasse, that's the first thing we jump to is you're trying to do this. You don't know what I'm thinking and you don't know what I'm trying to do. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other indicators we'd like to put up as strengths or opportunities? As we are ready to move to next actions if there are no others. Okay. So what we would like to talk about at this point, there have been multiple suggestions relative to setting priorities, setting goals. Um, so certainly I think that is on the docket to move forward. And so I would like to advocate that we put that up there, um, that we move forward with of the establishment of priorities and, and/or goals relative to the board.
Next, it is the workshop list.
Develop the workshop list with a timeline attached and prioritize it.
And scheduling, um, you know, workshops and things.
Yes, ma'am. Let Cindy get caught up here just for a second with the timeline. Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
Uh, develop a protocol for board member and board oversight of administrative functions. And I'm referring specifically to community questions, invest, requests for investigations, et cetera.
Any other items?
Consider a policy for communication plan for superintendent and the board.
Now, I clarify, we're looking at policy, not process.
Correct. I, I believe that communication needs to be policy.
Okay. Consider developing a, a policy relative to communication process or communications. Other items that we need to develop or continue?
I can do that, Madam Chair, if you want me to now.
Yes, please. Well, I'm saying the superintendent is working on a new initiative.
Yeah, and I, I do have the, the draft document pretty much done. I, but when I took it to Cabinet really to, to go through it, we really felt as a cabinet that we have to, we also with that, we have to take the reorganization of what we're going to do moving into the next school year and put that with the plan and share the whole package with the board because with it includes who specifically is responsible for what. Uh, I really want to rework how we communicate with the board. Um, I think we have to have, um, positions specific within, within my office and staffed by somebody that you trust, I trust, and can help with communication so that you're, you're getting things, uh, timely. It also has to be, um, you know, something that where we structure with different staff members so everybody is responsible for, knows exactly what their level of responsibility is. Uh, I think we need a process for sharing the information log, you know, how often we're going to do that. And, um, and again, I think that most of that is, in terms of what's written down right now is what Mr. Williams, when Mr. Williams and I met with you and shared, it's, uh, just a little bit more expanded document than that. But I think it needs the other layer, which is the staffing portion of it.
All right. So we are at 4:30. Are there any other items that we'd like to continue as, for, develop as next steps?
I say we can continue to respond to our public.
Okay.
And keep the vision initiative.
As centrals. Any other items? All right, well, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just before we close, I would like to ask you all, it's your leisure, to take this list, look at the things that we have talked about and discussed. And in the last column, which is, as a result of this discussion, I'll take the following action. Individually, personally, not to be shared with anybody, but that we each look and see, what is one thing that I can do to further this board as a team?
But may I point out that this is a public record because it's meetings. It's notes during a meeting.
If somebody requested, then you know.
If you turn them in, it'll be a public record.
Oh.
I didn't realize it was a public record. We just kept.
Not everybody has filled out anything. It's just an empty document, so you have to sign it and return it.
Great.
It's like a worksheet.
So I can take notes during a meeting and those are not?
No, 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 not. This, this was just a worksheet that you were asked and your own thoughts write down as you were going to discuss. That's what that it started at.
Okay.
So, Ms. Gittens, one other thing before we can re-adjourn, I wanted to mention we do have the strategic plan projects and thank you all of you for submitting your first and second and third choice. So that has been, um, distributed to you and I will be, for permission, working with Susan to get some meetings scheduled with the appropriate. to get some meetings scheduled with the appropriate executive team members so we can get that, that plane off the tarmac.
And also, Dr., this-
Should have been included, if it was not included in board docs, we'll make sure that gets out to you ASAP.
And the, Dr. Carlyle, we will be talking with each of us before we attend our first, you know, meeting with our particular group. And to just, to reiterate things like that we are there as a liaison, we're there to help, and she will discuss all of that and be attending at least our first meeting with our group. And the chiefs and all have, know what's going on.
So, we will, we will share that with them.
And they're aware of it, and was just not scared.
I did mention it in Cabinet yesterday, that, and they were very happy, everyone appeared to get their first choice, which is a really good thing.
First or second.
First or second, okay.
Yes, sir.
And the idea is we can-
The categories were chosen by design.
And the thing about it is, you can do as much or as little as you want to based on your time and your energy and your expertise. Thank you, everyone. We will adjourn, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Can I do this as, go to the older question, or I, I don't know. All right.
No, go ahead.
What, what I wanted to know from Dr. Atkins, because I've, I've sent several requests for updates on the Head Start investigation that's going on, and it's my understanding that Chair Gittens is the reporting official on that, and I've been waiting for information to come to the board. What can you, what can you tell us? The only thing I've seen is a generic answer that the legal team is, is working on this. Aren't we at the deadline?
I can tell you that, that the, yes, I mean, we do have-
When you've done, they have an answer to that.
Okay, all right.
To whomever.
Yeah, it was an item that, that, you know, was, is typically one that a board attorney would handle, and that Mr. Williams had, had been working with, with our new team members relative to that response. Mr. Williams was able to skewer a two-week extension of the deadline, which he did. I know that they've been working with the team to come up with a draft response, and my understanding is that we're ready to move forward with that.
So, that point, the document is just about completed, is expected to be, it's due tomorrow, I believe. It's going to, it will be completed, and once it gets, once it gets submitted, we intend to submit a copy to all board members.
But that's, and after the fact?
Because, ma'am, it's not, it's not something that the board is, is reviewing and approving, it's a document for information that will be presented to you, so you'll see it. It's got to go from the district to the, to the, you know, proper response.
So, explain to me, as, as where I got really involved with this is, without giving a whole history, somehow, my name was put on there first as the reporting official. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And, and it was on there, and I didn't become aware of it because I had no access to the account. You have to, it wasn't an attachment, it was an account. And I think Kathleen, you have, you're familiar with this from when you were board chair and had to, there's, there's an account in order to go through the correspondence, and I had no access to that. And I got access to it and talked to the help desk, and they said, you know, you need to, you need to get access from your school and from, and I said, I don't know how my name got on here, because it said my name and board chair, and that was wrong, I'm the liaison. So, that's how I got involved, because I felt like, even though it's their mistake and a mistake from the school district or wherever, when my name's on something, I take an act of interest.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as your, as the chair, if you, as the chair, I haven't seen that document, but
as the chair, if you signed it, that, that would have been appropriate. In fact, that was one of the questions I-
No. It was a mistake.
A mistake in the-
So, it is being, it is being prepared for Ms. Givens' signature as the board chair, you know, it will be submitted. If there's a, just to go back to the point that if any board members, if a question or any, if the district has any issue that comes up, we are, we do have the ability to add and submit a supplemental, further supplemental document as well in response. But it's because of the timeline, it needs to be submitted or forgotten, so that's why we're submitting it tomorrow.
Okay, but I guess what I question is, because I've seen this from, not from day one, because I wasn't given access to the account, but we must have started on this kind of late, because the original letter said they didn't see that there would be any necessity for an extension, but then we applied for it and we got a two-week, not, wasn't it an extension, it was supposed to be four weeks? It could have been as much as four weeks or thirty days or whatever.
He initially was requesting, I believe, a four-week extension and worked with them to secure a two-week extension. So, it was a dialogue between Mr. Williams and the folks at Head Start, is my understanding.
Yeah, and I hear, and I hear what both of you are saying, but my, my question, I guess what I want clarified is, if the board chair is the reporting official, that doesn't mean that the board should also see this in a timely manner?
It's not being signed on behalf of the board chair as part of the board, you're not, you're not recognizing it as being a board action. It's being submitted as the board chair on behalf of the district.
Right. Even though it specifically says, and I don't have the money with me, that the board is, is the entity that's responsible.
Yes, as the school board is always responsible for the district, in the end of the day, no matter what capacity.
And, and there you go, and so we're in a circle here. Do you understand what I'm saying?
It's the way that the agency is asking for the documents to be submitted.
They also said, don't show it to the board ahead of time.
No, no, it's, it's being prepared.
I'm sorry, I just, I haven't been through this before, and it's what I don't understand.
My comment before was that it's not a board action, you're not reviewing it and approving it, and that's why it doesn't, hasn't come to you in advance. It's not coming to you for approval at a meeting. It's coming, it's being signed by the, by the school board chair as, in her position as the chair. So, to the question that was being asked, will you see it? Yes, of course you're going to see it. Our intention was to, once we, once the document is completed and finalized and materials and, and right now, the documentation and exhibits are being put together, once all that is completed and it's, and we've submitted it, you will, you as board members will get copies of it, it's a public document.
Okay, I would have appreciated an update, because, an explanation, so I didn't have to, you know, I asked several times for an update.
It's being worked on as we're speaking.
Well, I, I know, but-
What you saw me doing was addressing some of the, some of the work on it while I was here.
I, I hear you, but you don't, you're not hearing me. An update means a week and a half ago when I asked, and then at the beginning of this week when I asked for a second time. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am, but I will, you know, I don't, I don't know when the-
But I hear what you're saying.
When the duty was put on us to, to prepare it, so we, we took care of it. We, we are doing it. We will take, we will get to the response.
All righty.
And her defense, too, I asked, too, so, so I understand, you know, her frustration. I got to advocate, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Morgan, any, uh, comments?
Thank you.
Anything, anything else?
I have none.
Nothing?
No, thank you.
Looking forward to Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Just to continue to work on operations positions, I think we're, we're very, very close. We've got some excellent candidates, and then what's even more encouraging is, is Mr. Pratt has some lead on some really good potential for the chief position as well. So, I'm looking forward to getting that in place in the very near future. I'm also going to, I just want to notify you, and I'll probably follow up with a, a phone call, but we have an opportunity to, to bring back an individual to, to the school district. I may use one of those vacancies as a temporary landing spot for that, for him, and I'll keep you posted on that as well. But that's, that would be a really good, I think, good thing for the school district and, but I want you to be aware, we're really, Mr. Pratt has been very valuable in this entire process, and I appreciate his efforts.
Do we have any resignations in key positions?
Not at this time, I do not have any resignations.
So, at your Tuesday meeting, Mick will be here. Yes, I will be returning in, in the month of June, so I'll be going out on vacation officially as of Tuesday, so, thank you.
For a whole month?
No, well, two weeks.
Because I hate you a little bit.
Two weeks, no, I'll be here for the month of June, two. No, I get, I get ten days, actually, so.
Comments as to?
None at all, pleasure to be here again, and I think that I will be here on Tuesday as well.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a job of five years. Okay, if nothing else, anyone else? Thank you very much.